The invocation and the pledge. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are so appreciative to be here tonight to conduct the business for the town of Richlands, to have public input on the business of this town and how it affects them. We pray for your guidance and your wisdom in everything that we do, and we're especially thankful that this is Veterans Day. We cannot be thankful enough for the people, the men and women who've given their lives and also served our country in so many ways. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We're here tonight for a public hearing, and I will read the notice of the public hearing that was published. It is, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, November the 11th, 2025, beginning at 5:30 PM or as soon thereafter as may be heard in the council chambers of the municipal building for the town of Richlands, the town located at 200 Washington Square, Richlands, Virginia, 24641. The town council of the town of Richlands will hold a public hearing to provide citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to Spearhead Trail's proposed ATV trail route. Thank you. And we have some people who signed up, but someone may have come in who wishes to speak who's not on the list, and thank you Amanda for providing this. We have Jamie, if I say the names incorrectly, please forgive me, Jamie Keeter, Marcus Boyd, Otis Music, Scott Honaker. Is there anyone who has come into the chambers who didn't get to sign up? You can just give me your name and we'll be glad to hear what you have to say. Anyone present who wishes to speak in this public hearing? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. If you give a name, man.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else present? Okay. Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir? Your name?
My name's Dixie Keeter.
Okay, Dixie? Okay, I'll add you, and are you Mr. Jamie Keeter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll add you both, okay? K-E-E-T-E-R?
Yes, Jamie, oh yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Hearing no one, we will move forward. I will ask that we can keep our comments to around five minutes. We should have plenty of time. So we will begin, and would you keep time for me, please? Mr. Keeter, Jamie Keeter of 271 Mountain Road, please, please come up to the podium and we're anxious to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
I really don't understand where the beginning and the ending of this trail is gonna be. Could someone explain that to me?
I will defer to the town manager to describe that. I don't want to be inaccurate about it.
When we initially, or originally posted the proposed route, it would have been at the very top of Mountain Road. However, now that property owner that we had talked with, or not we, I think Spearhead Trail rather, had talked with or approached, they have elected not to sell property at this time. So I'm not sure where a route would be at the moment, Mayor.
So...
Where would it start at?
Well, the original starting place was a property that he described...
On Mountain Road?
At the top of it, yes, sir.
And where would it end at?
The route would come out to Railroad Avenue from Mountain, and then from Railroad Avenue to Second and Front Street, which is our commercial district, business district.
Thank you. Why would y'all do that? Why would you run a motorcycle trail or four-wheeler? Why would you run it through town, through, you know, this property? I mean, why would you do that? What's the purpose of it?
I'll address it the best way I can. Maybe your question is more of a statement?
Sir?
Maybe your question is more of a statement?
Yes, sir. I want to know what was the purpose of, I mean, why are y'all gonna bring that through like an elderly neighborhood?
I'll answer it.
Sure, go ahead.
It was presented to us to do this. The idea was that it would bring money in, and I wanted to see what you guys had to say about it, because I wouldn't want that going by my house.
I'm sure the mayor would need it.
So, my thought was to get you guys in this room, and if you came in and said, hey, this is gonna bring in revenue and bring in people, we're okay with it, then that's one thing, but, I mean, that was what was presented.
Yeah, I don't see how that would bring any revenue into this town from, I mean, there's no stores there, no gas station. All we gonna have is more trash, you know, more needles on the street, you know, people running off the cliffs up there, there's no guardrails. It just didn't make no sense to me why you want to disrupt that piece of asphalt that y'all just put in there not long ago with all those four-wheelers. I don't understand that.
Well, the reason that we, the reason that we've looking at this at all, as you guys know, any, if you, if your town doesn't have more revenue, the only way to get revenue is to tax people or increase things. None of us want to do that. We don't have a desire to do that. We're looking at every opportunity to get revenue into this town that we can. And I'll tell you, in years past, there have been people that sat in these seats and administration seats that blocked businesses from coming in, that stopped things from happening. We don't want to be those people. We want, we want to make sure that we're looking into everything and examining everything that we can. And one example of that was that McAdoo's was gonna put a restaurant in this town, and the administration at that time blocked that from happening. That's facts. You know, I'm not gonna call names out, that 100% happened. We don't want to do that. And yes, these do bring revenue in, massive amounts of revenue. These people spend, on average, per person, per, oh yes, Scott, I mean, it's, this is legitimate.
Explain, explain to us.
Okay, so the way that it works...
They pay $10 for the gas?
No, 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 that's, that's not how this works.
Just a minute, please. One, one person at a time, thank you.
Let me just explain, I'm not trying to, I'm not justifying it, I'm just saying this is why we even examine it.
As a entrepreneur, you know, as a business owner in town, a four-wheeler is made or tracked, oh, that's made for a county, not a town.
Right, right, so here's how this works on the Spearhead Trails. They have to get a permit, and listen, I'm not defending, I'm just telling you, you asked the question, I'm explaining to you.
Okay.
So there's state, the state puts out the data. We don't get this data from Spearhead, this, this data comes from the state. On average, per person, per rider, they spend $190, this was, this is stats from like five years ago, I don't know what the numbers are now, it's probably more, $190 per day, per person. They, they come here, they spend money in stores, they spend gas, they stay in hotels, Airbnbs, wherever. So that's the whole premise of how the trails work, is that they come in, they rent a place to stay, they ride on the trail, the reason that they want to come into town is because they want to go eat at the restaurants, they want to stay locally, that, that's what that's about. But, and you know, you...
You gotta bring it up to Mountain Road.
Well, listen, we don't have to do anything.
In a town now, that's what the county's made for. I mean, if you want to do that...
Well, wait, wait, wait.
If you have a little parking lot for everybody's meeting and, you know...
Right, listen to me. We don't want to do, we're not saying we want to do anything. We're having this public hearing so we can hear from you guys, yeah.
You're not promoting it.
Listen, we're here to take, this is just for us to listen and answer questions.
And you're not promoting any trail?
No, we, we're examining the trails to see if it's something that we want to do as a town, because it is a moneymaker.
I don't see how it's the moneymaker from...
I just explained that to you.
...Mountain Road, from the top of Mountain Road to the bottom of Mountain Road.
But I can say this, that's not, the Mountain Road thing's off, that's not happening now. The landowners...
You're not gonna come up Mountain Road?
Not off Mountain Road, that's not happening.
I'm, I'm good there.
But the new proposal is down Ninth Street.
I haven't seen that.
Is what was said.
I know a lot of people that ain't even on Mountain Road that don't want to hear the motorcycles, don't want the trash, don't want the needles in the yard, and, you know, you can't, I mean...
Why would there be needles and trash?
...property value up there is gonna go, you know...
But that's really the opposite.
...million dollar cabin up there, man, and I got a motorcycle trail running through it, how am I gonna sell it?
Sir, uh, thank, no, you're fine. Thank you for your comments.
I'm still a little fine, man, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
I thank you, sir, for your...
You're okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no...
Thank you, Chief.
It's, it's a courtesy. Thank you, you're fine. You're fine. You don't have to apologize. We're all people sitting here. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have Marcus Boyd, Marcus?
Good evening, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. My name's Marcus Boyd, 306 Mountain Road, up there, which I hear you say that Mountain Road is off the table now. You talk about Ninth Street, what's, Ninth Street does still affect me up there, so what, what would the contingent route be? I'll ask that real quick before I make my comments.
I'll tell you what I've been told by other members of this council, that if people on Mountain Road complained too much, that they would come, instead of going up Mountain Road, they would follow the railroad track around, what is that road, do you know?
I don't have this, so, y'all have something that I don't have.
Because any other access to Ninth Street that I'm aware of goes through, goes through my property, so I would, you know, say nothing of that.
Marcus, what I would suggest, uh...
I mean, that, that's, yeah, that's something I don't even know about my city.
Well, regardless, I mean, this shouldn't even, you know, my, my opinion is this shouldn't even be discussed going through a residential neighborhood of any caliber, just because of the added traffic, I mean, the, especially up in that neighborhood, those, those roads up in there are basically, you know, they're one and a half lanes basically anyway, so they're shouldn't even, we shouldn't be adding ATVs, anything like that in town, simply because it's already, we already navigate, we circumnavigate each other up through those neighborhoods and with children and so forth, and it's already difficult enough to see some of these places, so many curves in these roads. It just, it would be really irresponsible. I think even just for the, the safety vantage point of the ATV riders, I wouldn't want any of my family members riding through any of the neighborhoods up through there to get up there to that trail, so I think that would be, that would be really irresponsible to, to even consider that. And also, you know, before, before any vote on anything like that, you know, you probably would want to make sure that no council members have any kind of ties with anybody that, that's involved with Spearhead or anything like that, any other business dealings or anything like that, because it'd be a definite conflict of interest if anybody's, you know, I think that would, you know, be a recusal of, of voting on, on any kind of proposal like that. Anyway, I'm, I'm opposed to it in the neighborhood and, and any residential neighborhood in the town limits, just for the record. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Marcus. And Amanda, you guys addressed it, you, uh, 306 Mountain Road, okay. And next we have Otis Music. Mr. Music, please come up. And if I have this correct, Mr. Music, you live at 1912 Ninth Street?
Yes, sir.
For the record. Thank you.
My family moved to, well, it used to be called Central Avenue before they called it Mountain Road, the first part, when I was 15 years old. And me and my wife, we built our home in 1977, and we've lived there ever since. Ninth Street is basically a retirement center. The only person that is on that road now that is still working is my wife, and we're 72 years old. So everybody there is either disabled or, you know, or retarded, and, and also pastor church down, it's at the end of Coach Road, behind Dr. Giborian's office down, well, we had a problem up there. There was a trail that was going up past the church, would go across the church property. Well, we put a gate up, you know, to defend the church against that, well, people would come off the hill, and you'd see where they do hill climbs out of a property up, you know, up the bank, and they would do down that center parking lot, it was a gravel parking lot, and so what we done, we hired a contractor to come in with the bulldozer, and we eliminated that problem, you know? But as a brother back here said that lives out from us, our road is very narrow, coming up, especially Mountain Road, is very narrow. And I've learned to, you know, navigate it over the last 40-some years, you know, we've learned to drive it. But people that are not used to that road, they seem to have some problems on it. I've got run out of the road twice that I know of. One time, a girl, I mean, she just put me completely out of the road. I was over in a ditch and I had to get pulled out, and they keep from hitting her. And so we see this problem, people that's coming through there, and of course, there's a lot of young folks that, you know, and I understand that, and when I was in my twenties, I was a motorcycle rider, and I rode all those mountains back in there. But there's more access, you know, there's, that we can get into the mountains if you want to, there's Hill Creek, of course, you can go back that way to go through, also Lake Park, there could be trails fixed from the Lake Park area. The West Fork area is a great place to do trails. I'm not against the economic, you know, viability of it, I understand that it's profitable. But then we would lose property value. Like I said, not only do I own land that's on Ninth Street, but I own property on Mountain Road also. My son lives in a trailer down there, then on the property beside of it, we have a neighbor back here that lives right above my property. So we understand that it's gonna be detrimental to us, to what we, to our value, and the value of, you know, our living value, of the noise, the aggravation. Back a few years ago, I had someone to break into one of my buildings, and, you know, they walked off with about $2,500 worth of my tools. There's no, I knew who done it, but there's no way that I would accuse anyone and not have definitive proof. And so, you know, I turned it into the police department, they said I could turn it into my insurance, I wouldn't do it because, you know, I didn't want the liability of that. But also, I'd like to ask the town, where would the liability lay if someone would have an accident on that road? Would the town take the liability of it? If not, you know, it's very likely there's gonna be accidents. Would we, if they run over our property, would we assume the liability? Or insurance? These are the questions I'd like to ask, and like I said, I'm a long-term citizen. I've lived in Rich, well, I've lived in Tazewell County basically all my life, and in Richlands since I was 15. So this is the reason I'd like to ask these things. I'm not against the economic development, I'd love to see more. You know, I'm an old coal miner. I'd love to see more economic development in our area, but I'd like it for it to be in a place like, like I said, Lake Park, if you have that area up, and of course, I know it would disrupt the, the people coming out of Lake Park, Hill Creek, or any of these other places would have the same problem we do. But I just don't think it's viable to be in a residential area, and I'm sure most of the, all my neighbors that I've spoke to so far have agreed with me on this. You know, I've just took kind of a straw poll, so I'm not saying definitive that all of them would agree, but most of us, well, all of us, you know, I'd say if we take, you know, if we had all our neighbors here, if we, and we'd all hold our hands up, the biggest part of us would either be, you know, retarded, and when I moved there, it was, I mean, very vibrant, a lot of kids when we moved there.
Thank you.
We had two small kids, and then another while time we've lived there, and all of our kids have graduated, you know, from Richlands High School. So we've been a longtime neighbor, and we'd like to stay neighborly if we can, and so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Okay, next we have Scott Honaker of 1801 Fifth Street. Scott, please come up.
I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak. I am also in dissent of this. I live at a stop sign where they must all stop to pull out if they take the notion to. My wife's from Buckhannon County, they have a real problem down there. They had a meeting in Tazewell to keep them out of Bork's Garden last Thursday. This meeting is probably gonna take the place of that meeting, if y'all would listen to us. I'm not against revenue for the town, I run a business, Seth, you know that. I'm against the residential area also. Ms. White, you live right down the street from me. People walk every day. People walk their dogs there every day. This is a quiet neighborhood, but it won't be, I promise you. And for what cost? I mentioned a while ago, $15 worth of gas, case of beer, Happy Meal? You're destroying the neighborhood. You wouldn't run it through Critterville, would you? No. What's the difference? You know, I'm a property owner. I agree with Mr. Music. It may devalue our property, the trash, the noise, it's something that can be avoided here tonight. Change the route. There's a lot of options. I heard West Fork was out because of the coal miner lease. They can't do Hill Creek or on down behind Old Acme down there because of the traffic count on the four lane. So that leaves it up to the council members to come up with a route if, if we have to, to put up with it, it is gonna be a problem. I don't think y'all understand, I was gonna say can of worms, but I think it's a Pandora's box that you're opening up. One bad apple ruins the whole bushel. My wife's from Buckhannon County. It's a mess, trash, people out of control. It can be avoided tonight. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Honaker, we appreciate all the comments. We have just a short amount of time before council begins. Is there anyone else who came in late? We've got nine minutes, who wishes to speak?
Real quick, I'd like to thank the town of Richlands for the program and meal for the veterans this last night.
Thank you, Pete, and if you would like to stay for the regular meeting, you'll have another, you'll have another opportunity to, to do that. Thank you, Pete. Anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the proposed ATV trail? Morgan, please come up.
We had an addition too. We had an addition, I'm gonna say her name incorrectly, but the lady in front asked to be added.
Dixie?
Dixie, to your list, yeah.
Go ahead, Morgan. So you'll know we're trying to keep it to five minutes. Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, it'll be short. So I live on Sixth Street, right below Mountain Road there, so the ATVs will come directly down and, you know, make that right-hand turn and follow the, follow the road. My, like everybody stated here, it's a residential area, and, I mean, we got tons of people, you know, that walk and do their dogs and stuff like that, and then kids riding their bikes, you know, that, that's a problem. Also, what would the times be, you know, because we don't want them running all through the night, you know? I mean, which, right, but, I mean, you know, a time limit on that, and, you know, there's, you know, there's rule breakers out there that would probably try and push their luck. But also, you know, liability issues too. What if they're coming down the road too and the brakes fail or something? Who, you know, whose home's gonna be in front of that? That's gonna be our home. Now, but bear in mind, it's made out of bricks, but, you know, that's still damage right there. So is there just no other alternative paths or anything that prevents us from going through residential areas that give them access to the town? Is there anything like that?
I don't know. I, I think that...
Well, we have a gentleman from Spearhead here, I'm hoping he has time to speak so he can ask questions, I thought that was the idea.
Right, if he's gonna speak, I'll, you know...
Well, I mean, I'd like to be able to ask him questions, I feel like that would be prudent.
Well, and I don't just...
I'm not, I'm not, I don't speak for Spearhead, I don't know if anybody else here does, I don't know what their hours are.
I don't disagree with that, right now we're hearing citizens.
I mean, I'll, you know, that basically sums everything up, and I'll forego...
Thank you, Morgan.
Morgan, the hours are from daylight to dark, but you're correct, there was a, a pretty big incident in Pocahontas two nights ago of running after dark.
Right.
Two, so that would be on the police department.
Thank you. Dixie Keeter, come on up, please, and is your address 271 Mountain Road?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
It's a pleasure to be here, never spoke publicly.
You're fine, you're good.
I just want to state that I truly oppose this trail being put in. Like everyone has been saying, it's a residential neighborhood. Not only that, you've got the animals, not only the animals, you've got Copperhead, Rattlesnake, things, rabies, things that you need to think about too for, you know, for the, if there was riders, you know, because I know how hard it was to go through the rabies shots that I had to go through, and I know how hard it is to get venom for even an animal. So I would like that to be thought about. Another thing I would like everyone to think about is our children on Ninth Street or on Mountain Road, Central Avenue up through there, have to walk through snow and ice and everything to catch the bus at the bottom of Mountain Road, okay? That's all year round, they have to go, sometimes it's still dark in the morning when they're walking down through there to catch the bus. Sometimes it's dark in the evening by the time they get off the bus, and they're walking up through there. And it's hard, I mean, if the, if the buses won't even pick up the children, it's too hard for the buses to turn around up, up, you know, on Ninth Street. It's too hard for certain delivery people to turn around up in that vicinity. It's too hard for me in a car to turn around on Ninth Street. I went out there just a couple of days ago, and yes, it is hard to turn around, okay? Plus again, you've got the road breaking off, it's narrow, the town bus that, that picks up people doesn't even go up, up there, you have to walk all the way down, you know, to Fifth Street to catch, and, and make an appointment to catch a bus, you know, to go somewhere. And I would, I would just, and there's also, you know, houses, homes that if they, if say a rider made a wrong turn or slid, accidents happen, they could go right through the roofs of some of the homes, you know? And again, there is also, you know, what happens to my personal property, you know? What if, what if somebody driving by, flying by, there's rocks and stuff that chips the paint on my car, messes my car up or busts my windshield? Who's gonna pay for that? My insurance? My insurance? I've had a perfect driving record. I shouldn't have turned anything in on my insurance over somebody's, you know? I know they're having fun, but I don't think town is the place to do it. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dixie. Let's see here, how's our time? Oh, we've got a minute. Was there anyone else who wishes, who wished to speak on this issue of ATVs?
I just have a question.
Please come up, we'll give you your time. Please come up. And state your name, please, and your address.
Susan Hensaker, 159 Mountain Road.
What was it, Suzie?
Susan Hensaker, 159 Mountain Road. I just, the question I was asking, we were all sent letters that we could mail back in, and I was wondering how they are going to be handled? Are they being considered along with this meeting or?
Suzie, I can tell you that the responses we received were printed in our, in our council packets.
Okay. And a petition also was signed that went around the neighborhood?
Let me see. I don't recall seeing that.
We're not in receipt of a petition.
Say what now?
Do you know, did you turn it into Town Hall? Smith, I believe, because she, she talked to me, but, and she told me there was a petition, but we just relied on what was dropped off at Town Hall.
I missed that. Who, who was it turned into?
I don't think it was turned into Town Hall, but I think, I guess a citizen still has it. I think we got maybe nine, nine letters.
Basically, the, the only comments I had, I think everybody else has touched on, things that we were very concerned about, increased the dirt, mud, you know, any kind of damage. I think Dixie spoke about that and so did Mr. Music. I think everybody is just concerned, the people that live there have been there for quite a while. It's a quiet neighborhood. We enjoy that. I think a lot of recent people stay there is because it's quiet. It's kind of out from town, but yet we're in town. And we just hate for that to change. And somebody had stated about Burke's Garden, there was a hearing on Burke's Garden. They were trying to get the ATVs out. So my concern is if this goes through and then the town's not happy with it, it's harder to get people out than it would be to stop them from coming into, from the beginning, I feel like. Yeah, I think there will. A lot of people that I've talked to from different areas, Pocahontas and Buchanan County, they all say that there are issues and wish that they'd never done that. And I think there are lots of things that the town could do. And I know that some people didn't want restaurants to come in, but I think the majority of people that I've talked to would love to have restaurants come in. You know, we would all like clothing stores and restaurants and, and different places to come in so that we would have extra revenue. But basically, that was all I had to say.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't believe anyone else wished to speak that I'm aware of. Seth, you had expressed a desire to hear Mr. Pike.
Yeah, I just would like to be.
During public hearing or during regular council?
It doesn't matter if he's got time to stay. I just want us to be able to ask him some questions. There are a lot of questions asked that I can't answer, and I feel like he, he has the information that, you know? But just again, to reiterate, we have not chosen any route that's, there's, this is a public hearing to hear from the people who live there. It's not a, this is not an argument, it's not a fight, it's not, I don't know why it got whipped up into some, you know, what it's become because it's not what the desire is. We just wanted to hear from you all, you know, we want to know, you know, and Steve's here, he can ask, we can ask him. The numbers I gave were numbers that were old numbers, they're probably updated more, but they have these numbers. They know what people spend. This is, it's legitimate, it's real. And look, we'd all love to have more restaurants and more stores, but in order to do that, you have to have not a dying population, you have to have an increasing population or a reason for that. If you look at, you look at the town of Damascus, you know, 15, 20 years ago, maybe 30, I don't know how long ago they opened up the bike trails in Damascus, but it totally transformed the town of Damascus. It became a place, it was a place that was dying, and it completely changed what they do over there. You know, we have opportunities for other recreation too. It's not just this. We're looking at every opportunity that we can. You know, this rail line that has been abandoned from Jewel Ridge to the town is a huge economic opportunity. We could do the same exact thing that Damascus did with bikes, we can do that here. And that is a huge, I'm talking about millions of dollars of revenue into that community. It saved, it literally saved their entire community. It built the town what it is today, but we ha, we can't be closed minded. That's my whole point of what I'm saying. We can't just say, I don't want this in my backyard, I don't want this. We can't do that. There's got to be a way you can figure out how to make it work. That's all we're trying to do, is listen. If this is something that's viable for the town, if it's beneficial for the town, we want to do that.
I was just going to say, everybody's okay with that. We just don't want it in the residential neighborhood. If I'm allowed to run it through a commercial, that's all right.
Right, that's what, you know, and that's some of the questions we can ask Mr. Pike. I, I don't know the answer to that.
I think that that's the, the, the letters, the people that I've talked to. I'll tell you, I'm getting over a bad chest cold, head cold. And while I was sick, I was napping during the day and someone was, would you say illegally? They were, they're not allowed to drive a dirt bike through my neighborhood, and they did. And it woke me up, and I was not pleased and called the police. The police came and, you know, they took care of it. But I think for me, I think, and what I'm hearing is nobody is opposed to the discussion of them coming into town, but I have not talked to one single person who is okay with them coming through a neighborhood. And if that is what we're desiring, you know, I, that would be on us. We don't have a town manager right now. We're about to go through a town manager transition. I think it would be important when we get a new town manager to talk about, you know, how we get them into town, if that's what we desire, just not through a neighborhood. Because even listening to you guys right here, I don't think anybody's opposed to, to that discussion. It's just, literally just, nobody wants it in their neighborhood. I, I wouldn't want it with mine, so I stand with the neighborhoods on.
May I ask a question, please? If you had to run away the railroad going to Jewel Ridge, there's already an extension out to Barrowlock. I thought it is on Barrowlock, and we've had some issues, of course, you know, noise and getting on the property. But why not establish it? And I know it would take some work, take the rails out and do like they did with Jewel Ridge, run it down the railroad and bring it into Richlands. Would that not be viable?
That, that's controlled by, I mean, there's a lot of things with that. And the state's got something tied up on that right now. We're still trying to get informa, I've been trying to get information about that for over a year because I really think that our best use of that rail system would be to run a bike route from Jewel Ridge down into Richlands. You know, you're talking about thousands and thousands of visitors every year to Damascus. It's a huge, huge opportunity, but we just got to look at everything. And that's what we're here tonight. We just wanted to hear from y'all. We want to hear from Steve, we want to hear from Spearhead Trails, we want to get all the information. You can't make an educated decision if you don't have all the information. And in this town, we're in no position to turn away a source of revenue that could be viable for our town. That, we have to examine those things. That's what we're here to do, you know? We got to listen to that. It's not that we're saying we want to run it through residential neighborhood. I don't think anybody's saying that, that's, we get it. We just want to listen to you, we want to hear from them. We're not making any kind of decision tonight, we just want to listen.
Thank you. The people have spoken.
If I can, just for one moment before we stop the public hearing. So I just want to make it clear, when, when we were approached by Spearhead about the potential to open up our roadways to ATV traffic, we were made aware of a piece of property in that area that would potentially be for sale. It's in close proximity to, to some of their trails, or at least they would be able to develop some. So it was a discussion that we wanted to have with our community. And again, we're not, you know, from the town perspective, from the employee side, we're not trying to ram this down anybody's throat, okay? There's always the opportunity to change and to look at other routes, okay? That property owner came in a couple of weeks ago and, and said, look, that property's no longer on the table. So right now, you know, there's a tremendous amount of opportunity for the town to regroup, talk with Spearhead, and to look for other avenues, okay? So again, this was a public hearing that was designed to hear your, your thoughts and to hear your concerns, and that's what we do as public servants, so I want you to understand that. So again, there's no, there's no property for sale on Mountain Road now. I know that property owner was a little upset, he was getting a lot of pressure. So I'll make that clear before everybody leaves, is that, you know, that property owner has expressed that they don't want to sell that property anymore. So, you know, my suggestion to council at that point was, you know, let's regroup and have another discussion, you know, well-thought-out discussion on how we want to do this and where we want to bring it in at this time.
Thank you, Ron. There was a desire to hear from Mr. Pike, and I think we should. I'm asking council, we can't vote. Consensus, would you like to hear from Mr. Pike now or in regular council session? Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I think since these people are here, they might like to hear what he has to say.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Is council in agreement, general agreement to hear from Mr. Pike at this time? Mr. Pike, please come up and try to address some of these questions, real concerns. What you're hearing are this, obviously you know this, are the citizens who live in the neighborhood that was proposed to have a trail coming down from property that is no longer available. So please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I appreciate everybody being here tonight because, and just to give you a little history about Southwest Regional Recreation Authority, Spearhead Trails as it's called, was created in 2008 by the General Assembly. It was created as the economy in many of the counties here in southwest Virginia started to decline because of the decrease in coal. And they created this authority to try to create some outdoor recreational opportunities for these communities to bring tourism and to create some economic stability for, for, for the region. And as Mr. Holt alluded to a while ago, several months back, there was evidently the landowner that may have been interested in selling his property at the top of Mountain Road. There's two parcels of land, Pocahontas land and CNX properties that are adjacent up there. We have trails that we use, utilize on those properties. When I came before the council here previously and they asked about a public hearing, you know, my comment was absolutely, we want to hear from the public. Because our goal is if a community wants to talk about ATV trails, we're here to sit down and talk about how that works. Because it benefits the folks here in the town of Richlands. It's, it's an ability to stabilize some revenue, increase revenue. I have Molly Land, our marketing director here, she can speak to some of those numbers. But I can tell you, if you look at the town of Pocahontas, St. Paul, town of Coburn, they have this very similar, exact trail system that interacts with their communities. These were put in many years ago, been extremely successful. I know probably all of you in the room have heard of Hatfield, McCoy, Everton, West Virginia. A few weeks ago, we actually connected to their trail, they connected to us in the, in the town of Pocahontas. So we're seeing lots of folks from all of the United States that actively ride these trails. Now, a lot of the comments about safety, our trail systems are very tightly controlled. We have trail rangers and we have a set of rules that our riders have to follow. There's no questions about that. If they don't, they get ticketed for it. Riders can only operate from sunrise to sunset. They have to have helmets, there's no alcohol allowed. There's very strict rules, and we, we've got a, a pad of these rules up here. You're welcome to take with you as you go. So our trail system is very controlled. It's not come as you want, do what you want. It's very restricted, and that's what we want. So I appreciate everybody here tonight and appreciate the comments that I've heard. And I just want you to know from our perspective, we're here to work with any community. We're here to work with local governing body if you all choose and want a trail system. That's, that's why we're here. So happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. First off, would you mind to state for the record and for those people, your official position, title with Spearhead, and also your personal address?
Sure. So I live at 714 Pikeview Drive, Fort Blackmore, Virginia. That's in Scott County.
Okay.
And I'm the Government Relations Director for the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority.
Okay, did you get that, Amanda? Okay. Just wanted to be clear so they know what your position is.
Absolutely.
And the other question I have regarding the ticketing, you ticket people who violate your rules?
Absolutely.
How does that, how do you, how do you do that?
So we have trail rangers that write them tickets. It's a civil penalty. It's a hundred dollar fine if assessed. So that's how that, that system works.
And what, how, how do you collect that money?
So they have the ability to pay that fine. If not, our board attorney takes them to local court, and that's how that's pursued.
Okay. And go ahead, I have lots of questions, it's raised questions for me.
It just sparked when you said that. So like the incident in Pocahontas, was it two nights ago? Do you, do you know what I'm talking about?
No, I do not.
There was an incident where a couple of ATVs came down about 10:30 off of the trail into Pocahontas, and they were, they, they had slung some rocks onto a, a car and a home, and the lady came out of her home and put the video on Facebook and, and all of that. And I think the Pocahontas police responded to that. So once they get into the town, it isn't your trail rangers, it would be the local, like originally it's Police Department that would be responding to that, is that?
We work collaboratively with either the town or county law enforcement. So it could be our trail rangers, or it could be local law enforcement, whoever was available at the time.
And would that, would they have authority, the trail rangers, would they have authority in the town limits to, off of the trail? I'm saying like if they were on.
It would depend on, I mean, it would depend on the level of certification. I know Mr. Pike and I have talked about the potential for, you know, S cops, for his trail rangers to be S cops. They do have traffic, they have traffic enforcement authority as S cops. If, if they are, if they elected, go that certification route. They would be able to enforce trail rules. Outside of trail rules, there would be police officers that would have to enforce traffic code. Now again, if they are S cops, special conservators of the peace, that they, they can enforce traffic code.
Ma'am, let me interrupt just a minute, please. So that we have, it's a public hearing that has morphed into a discussion. So please know where we are at this point in time. Counsel, are you in agreement with me? It's morphed into a discussion. We're hearing the public, we're also discussing things with Mr. Pike, who works for Spearhead, and the public, and the council. So please bear in mind, if you have any comments, I would appreciate it very much if you raise your hand to be recognized. Thank you. Who would, Mr. Marcus?
Well, I mean, we're talking about the trail is, is police. I think everybody understands that. But the issue that we have, and we're brought here for the public hearing to discuss the access through residential neighborhoods. So really, that's where the problem is, more so than the actual trail. So that's, that's going to be originally in the Police Department, that's going to be us kind of issue having to deal with. So that's, that's the issue we have with that.
Mr. Holt, how many officers do you have on duty during each shift?
That's directed to me, you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes. Chief Holt, I recognize Chief Holt. How many officers do you have on duty?
Day shift, we have, Monday through Friday, I mean, you don't have strictly patrol officers?
Yes.
Two, three, if we're lucky.
That's right, two to three, yes.
If we have a split shifter.
So here's the difference between what we have and what Pocahontas has, okay? We have two to three officers on duty every shift. Pocahontas may have one, and I don't know if they have a night shift, if they depend on the county. I don't know, do you, do you know that?
They have one, they have one sworn officer who's the chief. It's my understanding that the county still provides their overnight and weekend coverage.
That's what I thought, from what my memory was. So here's the difference. I don't know how many deputies that the sheriff has on, you know, at night. I, I'm sure, but he's covering a large swath through the county. And that is a complete difference when, wherever we put the trail system within town, wherever we're able to do this. Let's just for say that it was on Mountain Road. You're two minutes from the police station. You pick up the phone and you dial 911, Mr. Holt's officers are going to respond to that call. That's, that's a major difference.
Yeah, but what, the thing is, if you're not going to build a residential neighborhood, you're going to have less interactions with people, you're going to have less opportunities for it.
for issues like that. If you've got a channelized area and a more commercial, commercially zoned area...
That, that's the whole design, Marcus, that we...
Yeah, when that access occurs, then you don't have that interaction. You're not going to have that many calls. That, that's, that's my, that's really the crux of my point.
But, but again, I just thought you were saying that, you know, they weren't going to do anything or no one's going to respond. I just want to make sure you understand, we have one of the best police forces in southwest Virginia.
Fantastic department, but I hate for them to have to spend resources coming into a residential neighborhood.
Well, I'm sorry. Let me, um, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate everyone's comments. You have something you want to say, sir?
Me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as far as what, what kind of patrolmen you have, patrol these...
We have, they're, they're Trail Rangers.
All right. Well, I can tell you, I mean, everybody knows they're not going, nobody's going to respect no Trail Ranger when they don't even respect the police, you know what I mean? The trash, the amount of trash and the beer and the mud on the street, who's going to maintain that? Your company?
So we have a, a maintenance group. And so we have very specific standards we follow in trail construction. Yes, sir.
I mean, the towns you go through?
No, not in town, no.
Well, who's going to clean Mountain Road if this goes through? Who's going to sweep the road off in the mud and gravel?
That'd, that'd be something we would work with the locality on. And again, you know, the, the, I think it's, it's been mentioned here tonight, it's, the route is up to the community and the governing body. We're here, if, if that's desired upon for a trail system, we're here to try to help facilitate and make that happen, so.
If it comes through Mountain Road, but I mean, y'all can, y'all are still thinking about taking it somewhere else, right? What you're saying is coming here, a long way to go.
No, 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 no one said that. We're, we're having a discussion. It's not coming through Mountain Road, so you can go ahead and take that off your chart. We're, we're trying to see if it's viable, potentially. No one's made a vote, no one's done anything. This is potential.
And I think, yes, sir, right here, yes, sir.
So it's not going to come down 1801 Fifth Street, where I live?
I don't know that yet. We, before we propose any route, we will have another discussion just to make sure everybody's on board. We're not going to, Scott, again, no one's up here trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. That's why we're having a meeting. Mr. Pike wanted a meeting. It's, I don't understand how it's morphed into this, everybody's pissed off about everything. It just, that, that is absurd. We're trying to do something that's good for this town, something that will benefit everybody. That's why we're trying to figure out the best route. And I get that you don't want to, we hear you. I hear you. I, I understand it, I get it. But there, there's no need to come in and, and just everybody jumps to conclusions, everybody's angry, I don't know who's out whipping the community up, trying to piss people off. That's not what this is about. This is about looking at something that's a viable industry for our town. Listen, we need every, we need every possibility of industry. We're losing population, we're losing all these things, and whether it's this council, the next council, the council after that, you have to have revenue to run all these things that we do as a town. And if we don't have tax revenue coming in from businesses paying it, or Mills Tax Revenue, which is a big provider of portion of revenue, and you can increase that with tourism, you don't have those dollars coming in. You know who that, those dollars have to come from? It has to come from every one of us who own property or sit in this town. That is a real thing. So if we don't, if we kick away a viable industry, just like I said earlier, past administrations that sat in here, no one on this board, past administrations that sat in here, got rid of Amacaduce, that was a viable project that would be located in the section house today. That's, that's the truth. That's real. I've had that conversation with Mr. Mocker, who owns Amacaduce, with his representatives and his, and his folks. They were pushed out. That didn't happen. That's wrong. We need people up here with foresight who are not going to allow that to happen. That was one of the major reasons I even ran for Board of Supervisors years ago, because it made me mad that someone that sat in a job in a town said, we don't want this, when our town and our people need more revenue, more industry, more things. That's what everybody complains about here all the time. Well, all of our kids are leaving because they don't have anything to do, you know? My son's halfway across the country right now, trying to figure out what he wants to do in life. Because we need more opportunities, not less. We need more revenue, not less. That's why we have to explore all these things. That's why we're having this meeting tonight. Mr. Pike, I know my numbers were old. What's the average spend per person per day on the trail?
And, and I can have Molly address that. I'd like to make one comment, just so you'll know. You know, part of, I, I grew up in Will County, I live in Scott County now. So, and, and I, prior to being at Spearhead, I spent 34 years in public safety, law enforcement. So I understand the comments and, and concerns that people have voiced here tonight. And one of the things when I retired and I moved back to southwest Virginia is trying to figure out, how can I help the communities here? What can I do? And Mr. White alluded to it just a minute ago. If you, if you looked at recent reports, it's been publicized about the loss of population here in southwest, southwest Virginia, these counties. And our youth are leaving because there's no good paying jobs here. So what we've done as an authority, we were proactive and I took myself and our team of employees, we sat down with the president of the Southwest Community College in Mountain Empire. We talked about how can we work together with the colleges in a workforce development aspect? So as Mr. White alluded to, if you have businesses that start to, to be developed here, restaurants, hotels, ATV repair, how can we create good paying jobs and keep our youth here instead of those folks leaving? So we're not only about trail development, we're about enhancing the community in better ways and, and helping our youth here. So I just want folks to understand that, that there's a broader drive for us internally from our employees and what we'd like to do to make, make lives better. It's, and I tell folks this all the time, it's not about Spearhead per se, or, it's about the 180,000 people that live in these seven counties that this authority covers. And what can we do to work with local bodies, local communities to bring tourism dollars here, so it doesn't get so costly on those folks that live here? So that's, that's what we're here. We're here to listen, we're here to work with folks, and that's, that's what we, we really want to do. So Molly, if you don't mind, if you, if you could answer Mr. White.
Molly, welcome. Would you mind to state your name and who, what your position is as Spearhead? Where do you personally live? Thank you.
My name's Molly Lynn. I'm the marketing director for the SRA. I live at 2103 Fourth Avenue East in Big Stone Gap, Virginia.
Thank you.
To answer your question, sir, Mr. White, from a recent study done by the Bureau of Economic Analysis that studies all of outdoor wreck and tourism, OHVs, ATVs, and UTVs, which are what people ride on Spearhead Trails, is the second fastest growing outdoor recreation industry across the country, only second to RVing. And some of their data teased out is, shows that a rider from outside the area that has to stay overnight spends on average $567 a day. A rider within a, a two to four hour driving distance spends $131 a day. And then a rider from within, like county access, they say, so counties adjacent, spends on average $92 a day in the local economy.
Thank you.
And can you also tell us the amount that these localities then pay in additional police coverage and cleanup and patrol?
I think that's a great point, because one of our goals for economic, driving the local economy is not just the way that, not looking at it just in the way that we bring the dollars in, but in the way that those jobs are created. So imagine then creating a new role, a new police officer, Rangers for us as we grow, as we grow by mileage. So anytime that we add mileage, we have to add maintenance to Cruz's staff, we have to add Rangers to John's staff. I'm hoping that someday they add a little bit to my staff. But I think that's a great question. If you could maybe write that for me, I could maybe get you specific answer on that. I don't have that dollar number right now.
Thank you. We have a couple more people back here who wish to speak. Obviously, this is an area of intense interest, and I would like to make a statement too. I don't hear anyone angry. What I hear is people concerned. There's a difference. Thank you.
I would agree with that.
And so, yes, sir. I, let me make a statement too, before I forget it. And then everybody may speak, and it's okay. This is important. Regardless of the cost of police or, or, which we don't know what that would be, or the Trail Rangers, which we, I don't know how that works. Apparently, it is, like anything else, it is not perfect. One man said, are rule breakers, and there will be, and it will happen. So please, yes, sir.
I would like to know how the numbers that you came up with breaks down individually with the food and gas and lodging, how does that break down? Because we really have no place for you to stay in the town, you know, so you rule that out.
So that's a, that's a na, a national average? So that's...
That's not...
Yeah, but we're talking about Richland.
Yeah, we're not talking about national.
We're talking about...
Just a minute, please. One at a time. Yes, sir, you were...
And no one's against the revenue.
Yeah.
It's not, nobody here tonight has spoken against the revenue, or against having them come and eat, or come and fuel up. We just do it in our drive.
And, thank you. And I don't know that she has that information. Those are national figures, is that right, ma'am? Okay. So maybe give her some time and she might be able to respond to that.
I would like to address your question. You know, as you said, we're here to just answer your questions the best that we can. And Steve lives in Fort Blackmore. Myself, I live in Big Stone. I am hoping, fingers crossed, that, that some of the things that are being discussed and trails being developed come to my community, because Big Stone has been able to, because of some outdoor recreation opportunities, sustain some restaurants. We're adding a grocery store. There's things that are happening. And so I think that when we look at this from a lens of, you know, I live right on the main, the main drag there in Big Stone, and, and there's, there's traffic. You know, I have similar questions to what you have. Somebody runs up their engine late at night. So we hear where you're coming from, right? But I think to specifically then answer what you asked, you know, these national averages for ATV, UTV, and OHV use, that would be in communities much like ours, because they're not...
90% food, 90% food, gas, how's he write that?
Would you...
You know? What is the, what is the revenue for the town going to be?
Let's give her an opportunity. May I say something, please?
They're, they're similar, what I'm trying to say is, they're similar communities to what we have here in southwest Virginia, because you don't, you wouldn't start an OHV or an ATV trail in downtown Indianapolis, where I was born, you know? Those things don't exist. So when it, when I say national average, you know, this is the national average for ATV trails. So these are in similar communities to what, to what Richlands and the local communities are.
Yes, sir. Let me ask, and I understand your question, so we don't get into things that can't be answered accurately, and give this lady an opportunity, maybe in truth, maybe you could try to break that down in future to answer his question. I think what you're asking, I think, is what, how's it break down locally for us, not just nationally, regionally? So maybe that's something she can't answer right now, but maybe could in the future. Is that possible?
I think the numbers would break down similarly, if you, you know, Pocahontas...
Nationally.
Um...
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
If you look at, you know, Airbnbs that have been able, cabin businesses, all of these sustainable places, I know you said that there's no lodging. I think things like this, you know, if this is something that you want to do, if it's, sounds like that Richlands is, if this community that's here today represents the community as a whole, maybe this is something that you all bear against. And that, I'm, we're, that's not for me to decide.
Yes, sir.
I'm just here to try to help unmask some of the questions. And I don't think, I, I'm so glad so many people showed up. I think that this is the beauty of living in our free country. And, you know, if you have specific questions that I can get those answers for you, that would be great, but when we use a national average like that, you know, I could write for a grant to, I could write for a hundred thousand dollar grant to do an updated economic analysis study that's probably going to come up with similar numbers. I would rather write a grant to see how we can create jobs in our community.
Okay. And Jordan has something he would like to say.
Sure. Sure. So similar on the numbers. Only thing I would say is, we probably want to break, get, break that down by year of impact. So I would imagine by year three, that drives economic growth, and thusly we would have Airbnbs or hotels. There's a lot of vacant buildings. I even think that one of the major vacant buildings in our town used to be the Richlands Hotel across from the railroad over here. That's what comes to mind there. So that's where I would want to see those statistics. And I will say, on the terms of national average, you do probably need to nerf some of those numbers when it comes to southwest Virginia. However, I pick up on what you're saying, the population comparables are things. You're not going to start these trails in New York City or middle of nowhere. However, I will say with the, there's only 3,000 approximately households in our town that are based on the trash numbers. You do need to extrapolate a little bit, but however, if we're concerned about the number, just divide it by two. I promise you, it's not going to get reduced that much. But I, regardless, regardless, I would be interested to see it by year impact. I don't think, I wouldn't invest in a town, year one, I would wait until it, I saw the trails were growing, year two and three. I, matter of fact, when I was in college, one of my first jobs I ever did, I worked for an electrician, in the summers when I came back from EVA. The first thing I ever wired up was the Hatfield McCoy small micro cabins, before tiny houses were a thing. And then you can see where that grew now. So I'm not saying it's right for Richlands. I'm just saying, we need to look at that data and explore it, just open-minded like Seth was stating earlier.
Okay. So that we, we've run almost 30 minutes beyond the allotted time, which I think is appropriate.